I'd like to call to order this May 15, 2023, meeting of the Board of Supervisors. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Hannah, will you please call roll?
Anna Payne.
Here.
Dawn Corporal.
Here.
Ms. Keane.
Here.
Mr. Kezak.
Here.
Also in attendance Township Manager Ms. Tealie Coles, Township Solicitor Mr. Esposito, Assistant Township Manager Mr. Valla, Township Engineer Mr. Kessler, Chief of Police Joseph Bararillo, Director of Building and Zoning Jim Ennis, Director of Parks and Recreation Paul Copera, Director of Finance Mega Bondry, Superintendent of Public Works Eric Gartenmeyer, Chief of Fire and Emergency Services Mark Antesewski.
Thank you. Our next Board of Supervisors meeting is scheduled for Monday, June 12, 2023, at 7:00 PM right here. So we have some special announcements and recognitions for tonight. So if Rebecca Nowak, I don't know if I'm saying that correctly, Girl Scouts Gold Award for Troop 2974 can come on up. The Girl Scout Award is the highest achievement, and Girl Scout Awards are dedicated to improving their communities by leading a team of effective, measurable, lasting change as they take action to transform their world. They gain tangible, real-world skills and prove that they are leaders that communities need. Middletown Township resident Rebecca Nowak, Troop Number 2974, is the recipient of the 2022 Girl Scout Award. Rebecca's project aimed to address the quality of food provided at her local food pantry and providing fresh food to the pantry. The families reliant on the pantry will now have access to more healthy alternatives. Rebecca will be honored at the annual Girl Scout Gold Award Ceremony on May 21, 2023. So we have an award for you. So next, I'm gonna have the chief come up. We're recognizing six police department employees for organizing a benefit for the family of fallen Pennsylvania State Trooper Martin Mack.
There we go. And I want to say congratulations to Rebecca as well. Great job. Good work. Okay. So on March 21, 2022, Pennsylvania State Troopers Martin Mack and Brandon Siska were tragically killed in the line of duty while patrolling on Interstate 95 in Philadelphia. Trooper Mack, one of the troopers killed that night, called Bucks County home. He lived in Bristol Borough with his wife and two daughters. He served in the Pennsylvania National Guard and was an assistant lacrosse coach at Truman High School in Bristol Township. This year, our police department stepped up big time and joined with the Bristol Borough Police Department in organizing a benefit to support the family of Trooper Mack. The benefit took several months to plan and organize. It was held on Saturday, April 29, at West Eby Hall in Falls Township. The benefit raised over $14,000 for Stephanie Mack and her two daughters. The planning and effort that went into arranging this benefit banquet was an enormous task, almost all of it done by Middletown Township Police Department officers. So tonight, I want to recognize the six MTPD members who were the main driving force behind the banquet and helping to raise the donations for the Mack family. These officers volunteer to combine hundreds of hours of their time to make this event happen, make it a success in raising funds for the Mack family. So to Middletown Township Police Department Officers Paul Runner, Joe Calora, Derek Leihnhauser, Mark Leihnhauser, Melissa Robison, and Animal Control Officer Cheyenne Keane, thank you for all of your efforts and hard work in organizing and running this benefit banquet for the family of fallen trooper Martin Mack. I have one plaque with all of your names on it, which I'm gonna give to Officer Runner, and a certificate of appreciation for all the officers, and I thank you all for your hard work. You did an amazing job. So congratulations. And, give me one second, because they're not here, so I can't give them theirs. I'll give them theirs later. Paul? Good job. Okay. And, hello, Melissa, this is yours. Yep. Good job. You're welcome. Okay. That's good. Oh, Melissa, come on back up. All right, I'll move forward and once again say good evening, Ms. Payne, and fellow board members. The Youth Aid Panel, here and after, sometimes referred to by me as YAP, exists in every municipality of Bucks County and relies on hardworking and dedicated volunteers. These volunteers hear first-time nonviolent juvenile cases where minor criminal charges have been waived in favor of appearance before the Youth Aid Panel. Successful completion of YAP means that a juvenile will not have a record for that offense and will not have to go to district court or juvenile court. Instead, they will have an opportunity to engage in some type of community service or volunteer service without incurring any type of record. The Youth Aid Panel of each jurisdiction in Bucks County meets once or twice monthly in the evening to hear these cases that are diverted from court to YAP. The members volunteer several hours of their time each month to help our township and community in this valuable endeavor, and about 41% of total Youth Aid Panel cases in Bucks County are heard in either Middletown or Ben Salem combined. So both of our townships account for almost half of all YAP cases. The remaining 37 police departments account for the remaining 59%. This doesn't mean that Middletown and Ben Salem have the most juvenile cases. It just means that we are both greatly committed to the Youth Aid Panel program as the valuable diversionary program that it is. So tonight, I want to recognize Heather Rivera. She's not here, unfortunately, who for nine years has served as a citizen volunteer on the Middletown Township Youth Aid Panel almost all of that time as the panel's coordinator. Heather is stepping down from the panel altogether, so tonight, we present her with this plaque for her nine years of dedicated service to Middletown Township's Youth Aid Panel. And in her place, longtime Middletown Township Youth Aid Panel member Rita Bakshi will be taking over as the panel coordinator. So in closing, I want to thank all of our Youth Aid Panel members for the extraordinary work they do in volunteering their time for such a meaningful task. I know that Sheldon Post was here a few months ago and mentioned that as well, that he doesn't feel like they get the credit they deserve, and they deserve a lot of credit. He is also a member of the Youth Aid Panel and a valuable member at that. And I also want to thank Middletown Township Police Department Officer Melissa Robison, who serves as our Police Department Youth Aid Panel Police Liaison. Melissa does this in addition to all the many other tasks and responsibilities she has on her daily plate. So thank you to Melissa and all of our YAP citizen volunteers, and congratulations to Heather Rivera. Heather cannot be here tonight, so I'm gonna give this to you, Melissa, to give to her on behalf of Heather, and we'll make sure she gets it. So, thank you. Thanks for all the work. That's all I have.
Thank you. Officer Robinson, I just, before you step away, I just wanted to congratulate you also on the humanitarian award that you were granted by Wood Services two weekends ago, I believe. Our township is a greater community for having someone like you that cares so much about it. And I can attest that all of us are very, very grateful that you chose to be a police officer and that you chose to work in Middletown Township. So, thank you very much. Thank you for your service. Did you guys want to come up and get a picture with the awards and everybody? So next, under the special recognitions, I'm gonna turn it on to, over to Supervisor Hannah to read a proclamation.
Proclamation, Asian American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Middletown Township. Whereas during Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, our township and our nation celebrates the diversity of cultures, breadth of achievement, and remarkable contributions of these communities of brave immigrants who motivated by the promise of possibilities picked up their lives and found new homes here, of Native peoples who have stewarded these lands since time immemorial, and of community leaders shaping a brighter future for us all. And whereas throughout our history, they have represented the bigger story of who we are as Americans and embodied the truth that our diversity is our strength as a nation. And whereas despite the immeasurable ways Asian American and Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islanders enriched this country, we continue to see persistent racism, harassment, and hate crimes against these communities. Attacks on Asian American women and elders have left too many families afraid to leave their homes and too many loved ones traumatized. And whereas the Middletown Township Human Relations Commission is dedicated to promoting the value of diversity and addressing discrimination within our own community, and now therefore this month, we renew our work to put the American dream within reach of all people, and we celebrate the vibrancy, contributions, and future of Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander communities across America. And be it further proclaimed that we, that the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors, proclaim May 2023 as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Middletown Township, and call upon all Americans to learn more about the history of Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander heritage, and to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities. Middletown Township Board of Supervisors proclaim this day, the 15th of May, 2023.
Thank you. So next, we have public comments. So this is public comment on non-agenda items only. So if there are any comments from the public, please come up, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bob Feather. I live at 96 Highland Parkway. I'm a 34-year resident of Middletown Township, so I've seen a lot of changes. You're all familiar with the issues and concerns that myself and my neighbors are experiencing. I know you are, because we've sent you several emails and several letters, most of which, actually all of which, have gone relatively unanswered, unresolved, unaddressed. We're trying to resolve these things, but yet we're not getting any help from you, and we need your help. So we're asking for you to get involved. We've got state requirement, or state laws that are being broken, but nobody wants to do anything about it. We've got township ordinances that are being broken, but nobody wants to address them or do anything about it. We've been asking for your help for years. We had a meeting with the Township Manager June 9, nine months ago, almost a year ago, and there's nothing that has changed with all of the issues that we have addressed during that time. We're asking for your help, and we would really appreciate you getting involved and doing something for us. You know, you say you're concerned with the quality of life for all Middletown residents? Prove it.
Just a quick follow-up to at least update the board. Mr. Feather is right. I did go out and meet on-site with the shopping center management company, and some of the residents, the shopping center agreed to make some changes to some buffering. The last I responded to Mr. Feather, I provided him with an update from the shopping center, encouraging him to keep in touch with them. The township has expended significant amount of money doing sound readings. Our engineer's office has gone out there numerous times at different times of the day. We have not been able to identify a noise violation. Mr. Feather's current complaint is about the emissions coming from the trucks in the parking lot. The township does not have any jurisdiction over air quality. And so beyond working with the shopping center to try to get them to complete the project that they said they were going to complete, I think, I'm gonna say it was about a month ago that I interacted via email with them. I'm not sure what else we might be able to do.
So if I may, we're not concerned with air quality. You have no jurisdiction about air quality in our neighborhood. So there's nothing that you can do to help with that. That being said, the ordinance 321, if I'm not mistaken, actually specifically outlines what noise nuisance is and what the decibel readings are. The decibel readings during the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM are not to exceed 55 decibels 30 feet from the area of the noise. During the hours of 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, they're not supposed to exceed 75 decibels. I've taken readings myself when the trucks are sitting there in the loading bays 30 feet away, and they average 82 decibels. Okay? Our homes are less than 100 feet away from these areas. It is loud. We have the exhaust systems that are operating for hours on end, and we can't even open our windows because of it. The other part of that, too, is these trucks are sitting in these loading bays. They come in at 5:30 in the morning and sit there, running for hours, the refrigeration trucks specifically. Do you have any idea what that's like? We're prisoners in our homes, and it's progressively gotten worse over the years. You know, we realize we live behind a shopping center, but there's what's called reasonability. It's even in that ordinance. Reasonable. That's not reasonable. We're just asking for you to help us. You know what? We wouldn't have no problem with those refrigeration trucks between the hours of 9:00 and 5:00. Any other deliveries? Not an issue. It's the refrigeration trucks that are the problem, because they sit there for hours on end, and they operate during those times. The other issue is the trucks, when they're finished delivering, they pull out, they park in front of our homes, and sit there idling for long periods of time. How do you enforce, how do you enforce the state law about trucks over a certain weight idling for long periods of time? How do you do it? We can't even call our local police. They're busy doing other things. What do we do? What do we do? I mean, the thing, the way I see it, if you guys give us a liaison to communicate with the shopping center on a regular basis, and communicate with the stores that are actually doing these things, and ask them to monitor themselves, maybe it'd be less obtrusive to us. We're just asking for your help. That's all. Thank you.
If I can just, if I could just jump in, and I, I've been involved with this issue going back several years. You and I have spoken directly. We have met. We've communicated via email, and you're asking for help, and we get it. We're trying to help. And I think if I can, and I know you're gonna shake your head and say the problem isn't fixed, but Township Manager Tealie Coles just rattled off the amount of efforts we've been making going back years. I mean, I'm thinking probably three years we've been trying to get involved with this issue. We have had our Township Engineer go out and take decibel readings. I understand what you're saying. We haven't gotten any readings that constitute a violation of our that constitute a violation of our noise ordinance.
Be there at 6:00 PM on a Monday, Wednesday, or a Friday. There's usually a truck sitting in the loading bay.
So we did have, there was a meeting with the owners of the shopping center, and we were optimistic after that meeting that the shopping center was going to work with us and yourself and your neighbors, members of the community, to try to implement some changes to improve the quality of life. We can certainly try to reengage with them. So tell me about your suggestion about, can you just come back up to the microphone if you don't mind, just so that we can all hear each other? Tell me, tell me what you mean about your suggestion about a liaison, because I think that doesn't sound like a bad idea. But just tell me what you mean.
Redner's Market was built or put in in 1999. Okay? Over the years, I've actually communicated with the managers, and the managers themselves actually did, they've done a very good job of having the drivers utilize the front parking lot after they make deliveries rather than sitting and idling in the rear parking lot. One of the things that I, a liaison, someone to communicate with them or the management company and have them utilize or have them tell the drivers, you know, it's a communication thing. The more you say something to someone, the more you reiterate this thing, the better it's going to be, and the more apt, they're probably going to do this.
Okay. I mean, I'm not opposed to that suggestion. I mean, I guess what I, help us help you, you know? I mean, and I don't, I don't mean that to insult you, and I don't mean that to suggest that you have not been trying to be as proactive as you possibly can be on this. But we feel like we've tried the things that we're within our power to do. So if you have other suggestions on ways that we can deal with this, we're all ears.
I do have a suggestion.
We recognize it as a quality of life problem. And just one point.
Sure.
Call the police. I know you said you can't call.
I have. I have. I have.
You're not the only street in the township that have issues with idling trucks, and other people call the police, too. I mean, so that's.
I have. And sometimes they show up, sometimes they don't.
Yeah.
I mean, and again, I understand. They're very busy with other things.
Yeah.
But I do have a suggestion. Contact Redner's Markets, find out when they're going to have those deliveries, and show up with the decibel reading and take a reading while the truck is sitting there in the loading bay with the refrigeration unit at high RPMs.
Can we at least communicate with whoever we have communicated with in the past to touch base and see where we are with?
We can. We have not been dealing with individual stores. We've been dealing with the management company. I've encouraged the residents to also advocate for themselves in addition to us advocating.
We've been doing that.
The more they reach out as well. I have no problem reaching out to Redner's specifically. Happy to do that.
Okay. We're willing to do that.
I appreciate that. We all appreciate it, believe me. It's just, again, we can't open our windows. We can't even enjoy our homes or our yards because of it. And 5:30 in the morning for a refrigeration truck to be sitting there, that's unreasonable. It is unreasonable, no matter what. But, thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Okay, so next on the agenda is consideration of authorizing the purchase of a 1-gallon steel dump body truck, or plow, sorry, spreader for $97,724. Eric? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. We have to do the consent agenda items. I got ahead of myself. Technology problems today. Okay. So I will accept a motion to approve the consent agenda items as stated.
Motion to approve the consent agenda items.
All second. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board?
I just wanted to highlight, one of the, one of the items on our consent agenda tonight is a resolution 23-12R regarding the Sterling Act. So this is an act, whereas the residents that are currently working in Philadelphia that live in Middletown Township do not have the earned income tax sent back to Middletown Township. So this is, there is currently a bill in the Pennsylvania Senate that passed that would actually allow that 0.5% earned income tax to come back to Middletown Township. So it's almost worth in excess of $650,000 a year. So I would, you know, I'm excited that we are passing it to really, you know, request that the Pennsylvania House passes it and that we could do a lot for the services in our township.
Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five zero. Okay, Mr. Gartenmeyer, now it's your turn. I apologize.
Good evening, board members. Tonight, I'm asking you to purchase the other half of the truck, the body of the truck that was back in March 20th at the, at the meeting that you guys approved for the purchase of one dump truck. This is the body for that truck. At that time, we didn't have all the bids, and I wanted to try to get a better bid price for the, for the body. So this is what we have tonight. So that goes hand-in-hand with the other part of the truck. And that includes the spreader and the plow and all the hydraulics.
And this is funded through the RDA grant?
That is correct, yes. And it was also out on Co-Stars. We went through Co-Stars bidding.
Are there any other questions? If not, all accept a motion.
A move to authorize the purchase of one 1-gallon steel dump body, one plow, one spreader from HAD Hart and Son Throw Fair, New Jersey, for a total of $97,724.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five zero.
Thank you.
So next is consideration of awarding the 2023 ADA Ramp Program to Scott Building Corporation, the amount of $465,100. Mr. Kessler.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. This year's ADA curb ramp program that we have is an annual program in the township. Had the bids opened on May 4th. We received three bidders for this year's program. The lowest qualified bidder is Scott Building Corporation. Their bids were reviewed per our township's responsible contractor ordinance. Just to give you a refresher of where the program is this year, our curb ramps are in the Quincy neighborhood, and we had started with the ramps there with our CDBG grant program last year. So we're happy to say that we can complete the ramps in that neighborhood with this year's curb ramp program. The curb ramps and the road program are kind of a combined effort, but we do separate them with contracts, just so we can get ahead of where the roads are going to be paved, possibly by a year or two. So when you combine those two budget line items, the combined total does come below what we have budgeted for the year. The road program came in quite a bit lower. This ADA curb ramp bid is slightly above what the bid line item is for 2023. But as I mentioned, when you kind of package it together again, it's still well below our budget amount. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and request that we award the contract to the lowest qualified bidder.
So I just, I just want to reemphasize the point you just made, because it looks like this is coming in about $65,000 over budget. We budgeted $400,000. But the road program came in significantly under budget. So when you consider them jointly, which we typically do, we're actually under budget for the total overall project, right?
Correct, yes. We budget each year $400,000 for the ramp program. You're correct. This one, the lowest bidder for the base and the alternates is 465,100. If you combine what we just had awarded last month for the road program, that came in quite a bit lower. This awarded and what we had last month were $94,233 below what we budgeted for the both of them.
That's great. Thank you.
Are there any other board questions? If not, all accept a motion.
A move to award the base bid, alternate bid number one, and alternate bid number two for the 2023 ADA curb ramp replacement program for the total amount of $465,100 to Scott Building Corporation.
There's been a, okay, go ahead, sorry. All second. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Eyes carry. Five zero. Okay, Mr. Kessler, your turn again.
More ramps, yes. Moving on to our effort to really do as much as we can on the front of ramp replacement. The Levittown area obviously has a really large quantity of sidewalks and ramps that are pretty aged, going back to when these neighborhoods were constructed, which doesn't quite meet the current guidelines and standards for ADA requirements. So as the, as we just mentioned, the curb ramp program for this year focuses on finishing the ramps and the intersections in the Quincy neighborhood. And we wanted to just kind of show the map, although it's, you know, shows the whole area there. The text isn't quite as important, but the locations that are shown show all the intersections that we're working through a multi-year program to replace. The colors in yellow are kind of the areas left to tackle over the next few years here. But with grants like the CDBG grant, we're able to do more each year than just what we had budgeted. So that's what this CDBG ADA curb ramp replacement project is focused on. We're looking to continue with more of the ramps in that area on the other side of the creek there in Cobalt Ridge. And the ones shown in purple there kind of show the continued area that we'd be working on. As I mentioned, these are planned to be about a year, two or three ahead of when paving would look to be done. So we're looking to really get ahead to the point where we can do a lot of roadways in an upcoming road program in the near future. So for what is on the agenda tonight for these ramps, it would be the authorization to advertise for this project. We'd put it out to bid and hopefully have a bidder that could really do all the ramps that we have planned here within the grant amount. So it wouldn't have any additional cost out of the budget. This would just focus on the granted amount of $220,000 for the township.
And about how many ramps does that cover?
Very good question. We have 41 in this area here for Cobalt Ridge.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other board questions? Seeing none, all accept a motion to approve.
A move to authorize the advertisement to solicit bids for the 2023 CDBG ADA curb ramp replacement project.
A second? There's been two seconds. So a motion and a second. Are there any other board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Five zero. Thank you, Mr. Kessler. All right, so next is Mr. Anteseski for a consideration to purchase a firefight turnout gear and breathing apparatus.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you. It's the first time here. The request in front of you is a project that actually started last year. Two grants came together by the grace of God at the same time. So we were looking to replace turnout gear and our breathing apparatus. Our turnout gear currently, our career staff is wearing, is either borrowed from the volunteer station or it's old gear that's really outdated. It's been past its typical lifespan. So the two grants, the one grant for FEMA, Assistance to Firefighters Grant, or an AFG it's called, was actually from 2021, and it wasn't awarded until January of this year. And then the other grant is for $15,000, and that's from the state of Pennsylvania. So those put together with the items that we're looking to purchase comes up to a total to the township around $38,000. I don't have the thing right in front of me. But I know in this year's budget, there was money already set aside for turnout gear and for breathing apparatus. So we will well cover those costs and still have a savings to the township.
Thank you. Are there any board questions? Seeing none, all accept a motion.
A move to purchase of the turnout gear from Continental Fire and Safety of Hamilton, New Jersey for an amount not to exceed $55,240. I further move to purchase the breathing apparatus from Mid-Atlantic Fire and Air of Laurel Springs, New Jersey, for an amount not to exceed $89,510.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a motion and a couple of seconds. Are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Five zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, gonna do the Q1 2023 Fire and Emergency Report. Mr. Anteseski.
All right. Thank you very much. Again, appreciate you allowing me to come and speak with you tonight. We were able to put some stats together from the fire service standpoint that we were not able to do previously. The stats were kind of mixed, if you will. The volunteer fire companies each were doing their separate stats, and there was some confusion as to how things were going. So last year, under Don Harris, we were able to purchase a new computer program that the gentleman, the career staff were able to work on into the fall. And we started off January 1st with using that computer program for inspections, for activities, which is another thing we'll talk about tonight, and for call and incident reporting. So that's what you have in front of you. This information is the first quarter. I wanted to give you at least a snapshot of where we've been for the last three months, just to give you kind of an idea of where we're at. Obviously, if any questions, please ask. And if there's other things that you don't see in this data that you would like, these reports can be done in many different ways, pulling data from different sources. So if there's something that you don't see here that you would like to see, please let myself know, and we'll have our computer guy work on that, and we'll have that for you. All right? So if I may, may I continue? Now, can you, you see this in front of you? Or, okay. So anyway, like I started to say, this is for the first quarter. There will be one slide on here that's only for one month, and I'll explain that when we get there. All right, so these are just the raw data. So 404 incidents, and I'll explain the differences in a minute, between January 1st and the 31st of March. We also had 627 calls for service. That's the number of times all stations or more than one station was dispatched for an incident. In the past, we would have a number of calls, and Station A went to 10 calls, Station B went to five calls, et cetera, et cetera. And they just put those numbers together. So we didn't really have a number of incidents within the township. So that's why we kind of divided that out. Some interesting stats, 118 incidents require more than one apparatus or station to respond out of that quarter. That represents around 29% of our incidents required more than one apparatus. So a single apparatus may be like a car fire, a dumpster fire, a brush fire, whereas a house fire, an apartment fire, a building fire, smoke alarm going off in a commercial building require more than one apparatus because it's a larger incident and we require more people. So sometimes you throw numbers out, like, well, we had X number of incidents. It's not just one crew going, it's multiple crews, depending on the type of incident. Okay? So as I said before, calls for service is any time that Bucks County radio system sets up and dispatches us for something. So that has what we call a run number or a call number. So that's what the actual dispatch comes from. So there may be one incident and two fire companies go to, but it's still one incident. Now, they'll each do a run sheet, and they'll get credit for it, but just trying to delineate the difference where we may have 400 calls, like I showed you here, but 627 times the different companies went to those 400 calls. Does that make sense? So it wasn't just one apparatus, it's multiple apparatus. So I just wanted to try to break that down. So here's the individual fire companies and how each one responded by number of calls for that first quarter. So William Penn did 167, Pendel did 119, Parkland did 55, excuse me, 54, Langhorn was 151, and then the career staff was 136. So you can see, and it's, it's nothing against one fire company or not, it just depends on where the location of the call is, whether they're actually dispatched or not. So, excuse me. So now we're going to look at call location. So we tried to look at what was in the township and what we call mutual aid going to help our neighbors. Okay? So this graph kind of breaks down. Hopefully you can see it. The very large piece, obviously, is Middletown Township. And from the very top, the 12 o'clock position to the left are the burrows within the township. Okay? So when you look at what's in our boundaries, I called it, our response area, is 77% of our calls, which is a good percentage. So 23% of our calls are to mutual aid. And you can see them listed there from that 12 o'clock position down to almost a 3 o'clock position. There are small numbers of incidents outside of our area, but we do go help other people. And respectfully, if we don't help other people, when we need help, we're not going to get help. And respectfully, if we don't help other people, when we need help, we're not going to get help. So that's why we call it mutual aid. We give mutual aid and we receive mutual aid. I don't have a back and forth of that this month, or this report, but that is something on my list to add for next time, to look at mutual aid given versus mutual aid received from each of the surrounding mutual aid companies, just as a comparison. So then this is just our township area. Again, 87% of the calls within our boundaries is in Middletown Township, which is what you would expect. And then the boroughs are the other smaller portions that are illustrated there. All right, so I tried to explain that if you look at what the average is for calls throughout the work week, our work week is 24 hours times seven. You take that 100% divided by seven days, it's approximately 14.3% if every day was equal. So if you see here, it was 13% on Sunday, 11% on Monday, et cetera, et cetera. So we're pretty close to being even every day within a few percentage points. So we don't have necessarily one day or two days that are skyrocketed. I've seen stats where the weekends in a bedroom type community are very high, because everyone's home. Does that make sense? If it's more of a industrial type area, where Monday through Friday, the call volume is very high, because that's when those buildings are populated. So I just wanted to show you that our general call volume is pretty even throughout the work week. So now we broke down by calls, excuse me, calls by hour of the day. So we have the hours of the day along the bottom, it's in 24-hour time. Hopefully, you can understand what we're trying to show there. We have calls all hours of the evening, daytime, nighttime, et cetera, early morning hours. But you can see the bulk of our calls is in that, that timeframe where most people are up, which makes sense, right? But we wanted to show you that we are looking very closely, and we're about to go to this, is a 12-hour shift with our career personnel. Sometime last year and during the study, the volunteer chiefs had requested that we go from our 10-hour shift to a 12-hour shift, the six to six. It's basically when the volunteer personnel just are not available. So we're looking to increase our availability for when they are not available. So I tried to illustrate there that the bulk of our timeframe is at 6 o'clock in the morning. And it says 1,700 hours, which is the 5 o'clock hour. So it goes all the way to the end of the 5 o'clock hour. You can see it's a very good coverage of where we have the bulk of our calls. And then thereafter, from 6 o'clock to 10 p.m., again, we have a good chunk of calls, but that's when our volunteers are telling us that they are available. That evening timeframe, after they get done work, but before kids go to bed, that kind of thing. So I think we'll have pretty good coverage, but I wanted to show you that the, the idea of going to six to six is really going to help us out to make sure we have good coverage. So just an explanation here, a tactical box is a definition that we use. That means more than one apparatus to respond. What we call a local box, as I described earlier, could be just a car fire, a dumpster fire, things of that nature, where it would be a single apparatus response. So a tactical box and above, which would be tactical box and a full box assignment, requires more apparatus. So this is a breakdown by hours again, when we have those type of incidents that require more than one crew. So again, they're all the time during the day. There, there's an anomaly there that there's, you know, none at 7 a.m. But you can see still that the bulk of our stuff is from that 6 o'clock in the morning to that, you know, 7 p.m. time. And then the volunteers would be available in those evening hours. So again, this is when multiple crews are typically dispatched for this type of alarm. All right, and again, that's when the multiple apparatus typically would respond. And it seems like the heaviest is from 1 p.m. to 10. Again, our crews are going to be from six to six. And then the volunteer crews are heaviest in that evening timeframe. So I think we're still covering very well there, but that's something that we keep an eye on. If we start to see where the volunteer crews cannot cover certain hours, then we may have to look at doing other things for, you know, recruitment and setting up duty crews and things of that nature, which is on the, the topics, if you will, with the chiefs. We actually have a meeting on Wednesday evening with the chiefs and presidents to talk about many things, including response, but apparatus plan and some things of that nature. So all these items will be presented to them as well, so that they can see what we're looking at, because I don't think they've seen these stats yet either. And this is not to say anything good or bad about the volunteers, that's not the point. This is just raw data that we were able to collect over the last three months. Just a few more here. So we looked at types of incidents. Now, this is kind of shocking. We do a lot of inspections. We do have a lot of commercial buildings that have alarm systems. So our number one call volume for three months is alarm systems. Now that could be a malfunction. It could be somebody burnt toast that set off the alarm, that's still an alarm system call. So it's, it's the largest portion up there and that's all I wanted to show to you. And then as you go down, we have medical calls. The third item is working fires or dwelling fires. That's houses, it could be apartments, things of that nature. And then we get into traffic accidents, and again, fumes inside a structure. That's a multiple response, because fumes could be almost anything. It could be gas leak, it could be a smell of smoke, it could be a number of things. So I just wanted to point that out to you, that we're looking at what our greatest thing is there, which is fire alarms, which we do follow up on, which we'll show you in a little bit about our activities. We follow up on those things to find out what the problem was and make sure they're corrected, but it's still a large portion of our responses. And then I just noted the things that are in red that are actual fire type calls. So again, we're not just going to fire alarms, we do have actual fires as well. This again is just to show you, I talked about the local box, that's what's represented in green there. And that typically, again, was a single apparatus response, but we're finding out that during the day, when the career staff are on, we're sending a volunteer company and the career staff. So the local box, a lot of those are multiple apparatus responding. And you can see that the tactical boxes are a little lesser, 70, box alarms are 35, rescues are 13, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm glad it is going in this fashion, because if we had a lot of box alarm assignments and not so many local alarms, that means we're having a lot of big fires. And we're really not, which is a good thing. It's not to say that we still don't have to supply our fire departments, because when you have a big fire, you still need everybody there, right? So we're preventing them where we can, but we also have to be prepared for when they do happen. So that's all stations. And then this is the same graph with our career staff. So again, you can see where we're responding on all these local boxes. Tactical boxes were there, et cetera, et cetera. But you can see we have a much larger component of the EMS calls. We're running that QRS unit, which is a quick response unit. We have at least one EMT onboard and we're getting out there in advance. We're in assistance for the EMS crew from the squad. The other apparatus can also respond if it's like a cardiac arrest where they need more assistance. But as you can see, our EMS calls are a good portion there. All right. This is a new stat, this is only for a month, because we just started doing this in April. So we're hoping to get a little bit more data and see if these numbers hold true. But as you can see at the top, where it says our fire percentage is about 5%, our QRS calls is about 1%. So if you look at that, it's like, wow, you really don't go too many calls, which is a good thing. We're not trying to take away from that. But we're trying to show you all the other things that these crew, that the career staff does. So we do inspections, that's 27% of our, our work day or work month. Re-inspections, 28%. Fire alarm follow-up, that's what I was talking about, all those fire alarms. So we're going out and double checking them. And then the activities is another 36%. So you're talking about 94% of our day are all the other things that we're still involved with the public. We tried to list the activities there, just as an example. If someone calls about a complaint, Mrs. Smith calls about her neighbor having a bonfire in her yard, all those kind of things, we have to go out and check out. Fire drills at all the schools. Schools hold fire drills every month at every school and we try to be there for each one. Okay? Fire lane enforcement, fire investigations. Every time there's a fire call of any magnitude, we're supposed to go out and do an investigation. Fire prevention education events, we're really hitting hard on this this year. And Riley, one of my firefighters happens to be here, is spearheading that for us. But we do adult and children. We're doing extinguisher training, home safety visits, so it's not code enforceable. But if someone like us, we can come out to their house, do a safety inspection for them, try to help them out with stuff. We go out a lot to do smoke detectors, installs, battery replacements, all those kind of things. So all that's part of that in, in activity level. Now, under the inspections, I was quite surprised, pleasantly surprised, on how much inspections do we actually do here? We don't just do fire prevention inspections, which would mean the building would get their certificate of occupancy. And then our folks would come out and just do regular maintenance, check the fire alarm, check the exit lights, all those other things. Our folks are doing pre-construction plan review. They're doing all the international building code or construction code requirements. They're doing accepting tests for all the sprinkler systems, underground hydrant systems, alarm systems. So we're doing a lot of inspections from the building, from it starts on paper until it gets its certificate of occupancy, and then thereafter from a maintenance standpoint. So the level of the inspection here is, is vexed. Takes a lot of experience and knowledge. Don's been doing a great job with that. I know we're talking about transitioning him to a different kind of position, but that's something that I think we really need to focus on, because I don't see the township slowing down with construction. So we need to somebody in there that's got a lot of experience in that, because this is a vast majority of what the career staff is taking care of on a daily basis. So again, that's for a month, we're going to continue to provide this to you. Again, on a quarterly basis or as often as you like, just so you can see what we're doing. This was Mr. Riley's report, I just kind of broke it down for you. And it just shows how many smoke detectors we're doing, either a brand-new detector or putting new batteries in, things of that nature. We did fire extinguisher training 264 people so far this year. Sometimes we're doing it at events, sometimes we're doing it kind of sprung in the moment. Sometimes we're doing it at like a corporation and say, hey, we'd like you to come out to do some fire extinguisher training for us. So again, the more people we can get trained, the safer they can be. And then again, adult training, kids training, and home safety inspections, which we talked about. We did a few events, you know, we did the government day here, we had the fire prevention unit outside. The last two events we tried to do outside, we had rain, so it didn't actually work out so well. But we're planning on doing more of those kind of things. Again, the more we get out in the public and do fire safety things with them, I think the, the better off they'll be and, and safer, obviously. So I think that's everything, yep. So there'll be more reports to follow, like I said, if there's other activities or other things that you'd like to find out what we're doing or comparisons. I mean, let's face it, statistics are comparing two numbers. So if there's, there's numbers out there you want to see, day of the week type stuff like I showed, hours of the day, we can run those reports. But anything that you folks need to make better decisions, just ask and we'll get it for you. So again, any questions, I'll be glad to ask, answer anything that you may have.
No questions. I just want to commend you for putting this together. I mean, it really, really thorough and comprehensive and really helpful for us to have all this data. And I want to thank Officer Riley, or firefighter Riley, rather, for being here. And thanks for all the community education and training you're doing, it's fantastic.
It was our pleasure, and like I said, the, you know, how fire departments work and operate, manpower-wise and all those kind of things, if we want to do some kind of training with that, I'd be glad to sit down and we'll just run through what a fire incident requires, how many personnel, what we actually do, so you can see what we do. And that way you have a better understanding when we say, hey, we need X number of people or we need to buy this equipment, et cetera, et cetera. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, so with that, I move to other business, and Mr. Kessler?
Nothing further, thank you.
Mr. Vallis?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Yulikus?
Nothing, thanks.
Mr. Esposito?
I just want to announce that the board held an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss labor and litigation matters. Thanks.
Ms. Hannah?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Gizek?
Nothing further.
Ms. King?
Nothing.
Ms. Corporal?
Nothing.
Okay, with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. There's been a motion, is there a second?
Make a second.
Motion and a second, meeting adjourned, thank you.